Okay. Let's start the meeting. On behalf of the board, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. And the first item is the warrant. Motion by Brian. Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? That's unanimous. Next, the approval of minutes of December 15th. Motion by Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a change in Section 4, where we met with the Executive Board members of Community Media. What I'd like to see added to the bottom of that Paragraph 4 is that the request was made for annual audit reports and quarterly reports per the agreement with the town. It's just one of the things I had stressed in the meeting. I wanted to get that captured in the minutes.
Seconded on that. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Our first public hearing is the first hearing tonight as with an application to transfer entertainment common victula and automatic amusement licenses from Milford Hotel Group LLC doing business as DoubleTree Boston Milford to Milford TBL Operating Group Incorporated doing business as DoubleTree Boston Milford. We have Steve Gordon in front of us. He's the manager. The department head review form, everything seems to be in order. No taxes, fire chief, no objection, police chief, everything is okay. The first item is a transfer of an existing license, live entertainment. And this would be from, and Steve, correct me if I'm incorrect, Monday through Friday, 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday, 7:00 p.m. to midnight, Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to midnight, live entertainment and lounge area. And that's that. Those hours, okay?
That's correct, yeah.
Then the next thing is transfer of existing license, automatic amusement. This would be on the pool table, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00, Friday, 8:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m., Saturday, and is that holidays you put in here?
Right.
11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to midnight. And lastly, is the transfer of existing license, common victula. This is Sunday to Thursday, 6:30 a.m., midnight. Friday and Saturday, 6:30 a.m. to 2:30 a.m. Okay. Can you just tell, give us a little, you know, give us a five-minute public relations on the hotel and what's going on and all that?
Well, actually, we were owned by some venture capitalists in Boston, and my company managed the hotel. They put it up for sale, and my company bought the hotel. So now we own it and manage it. So everything's the same as far as the management goes. The reason we need those licenses is for our banquet area and our lounge. Lounge closes at 1:00 a.m., food 'til 11:00. And once in a while, we have a one- or two-person entertainment in there, whether it's trivia night, or a guitar, or something like that, small entertainment, there's no stage. We've done pretty well with everything else. I know I was in here once for a liquor violation, which we're pretty stringent on now. So that will never happen again.
Well, it does happen sometimes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Brian, any questions for Steve?
Yeah, you don't have to bring up the liquor violation.
Well, I was looking at the same faces, so.
I got a memory on that. We have short memories.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. That never happened. I don't recall.
I thought it was the people across the street. Let's see if we can remember.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's been a great operation, you know, since it's come to Milford. But just so I'm clear, and that was it. So this is entirely new ownership group. But this is the same company that's in fact been operating? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the Milford TBL Operating Group?
Yeah. It's Lynn Chris Hotel Corporation out of Hanover.
Okay, great. So now you're the actual owners as opposed to just the management group?
Right.
Great, good. Well, congratulations. Good luck with everything.
Thank you. Easy transition for me.
We've had a few owners now, huh? That location.
Well, this will be my eighth year as of July, so I think it's longer than the last couple.
I remember when Margarita Generazio opened it up a long time ago. Bill, any questions for Steve?
I don't. All the department heads seem to be, approval. I've looked at various police reports from the chief, and we don't have a chronic issue there. I'm comfortable with the transfer, and it makes sense from a business perspective.
All right. Want to make a motion on the live entertainment? Motion, live entertainment, transfer of existing license. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Brian, want to do the next one?
I'll move to approve the transfer of the common victula license.
Motion seconded. And the last one would be?
Automatic amusement license.
Yeah.
I'll move. Transfer.
Movement seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good night.
Congratulations. Good luck with everything.
Good luck, yeah.
Bye-bye. Okay. Next, we have a very interesting speaker, professional for the town of Milford, a town engineer. Vani?
Got to live up to that billing now.
I know.
After last time's, last meeting's performance, I don't know if you can cap that. But.
Yeah, that's quite an introduction. So I wanted to give you an update on a couple of different things. I know there are three or four specific things that you wanted to hear about tonight. And so I just put together a summary. So I'd like to start with the Louisa Lake Dam. We had to file an interim report with the Office of Dam Safety in December. That interim inspection was done by GZA, who is our consultant for the dam, and was filed with the Office of Dam Safety. GZA has also, at the same time, provided us with a proposal to do the Phase II work that is required by the Office of Dam Safety for the town. As you remember, we appropriated $100,000 at October town meeting for that work. So I have a contract with me tonight from GZA. It includes the hydrologic evaluation, topographic survey, wildlife and habitat assessment, plans and specifications for the repairs on the dam, the permitting assistance, bidding assistance, construction assistance and oversight, and an operation and maintenance plan. And then if the Office of Dam Safety requires us to do additional follow-up inspections, there's a line item for that as well. So the total cost, including additional inspections, would be $94,550. Just to let you know, our schedule right now, this is the worst-case scenario schedule. If the weather holds, they'll try to get out and do the survey before there's too much snow on the ground. But assuming that we, that winter arrives and we get snow on the ground, we're going to try to complete our design and permitting by November 2015 at the latest. Bid the project next winter. Appropriate the funds for the actual repairs at spring town meeting 2016. Do the construction during that construction season in 2016. Do you have any questions?
And the initial cost, Vaughn, is $94,000, right? $550?
Correct.
For the, all those items?
And that is GZA services through construction, too. So it's for the next couple of years. So the only thing that's not included in this is the actual construction cost of the repairs, which we won't know until we do the evaluation.
And on the last page, on Page 16, talks about unforeseen conditions. So, I mean, on something like this, the likelihood probably won't be that great.
The likelihood is not that great. The scope of work for items 1 through 11 in the contract is lump sum, though. So that's, unless there's something that was not specifically called out that the Office of Dam Safety comes back and asks us to do, there should not be any change in the contract price.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, Vaughn, as I look this over, first of all, it's kind of disheartening that, you know, that all of this, you know, work and permitting has to be done. It says the majority of the poor condition is primarily related to the presence of large trees on the embankments, you know. So has any thought been given in terms of after GZA does their analysis, is the town going to be able to do some of this work before it might go out to a contractor in terms of tree removal or anything like that? Or are we looking to contract all of the work?
Once we have an evaluation of what needs to be done, we're going to sit down with the highway department and see what can be done in-house by town staff. When they start pulling out larger stumps and that sort of thing, though, they're going to upset the structural integrity of the dam. And we don't, and, you know, so we want to have a contractor doing that kind of work to avoid any kind of breach in the dam. But any work that can be done by the highway department, we've already discussed trying to do that.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah. I was going to say, that obviously could potentially limit what would have to be contracted for.
Yeah, that's correct. Unfortunately, the cost for this study may be more than the cost for construction just because of all the permitting requirements.
Because I think Vaughn, the highway surveyor, has done some work already, right?
He has, yep. They've done, they've done an excellent job of clearing a lot of the brush and the debris that's on both the embankments and the impoundments.
So he was able to save us money on that.
Yes, yep.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, it struck me, I had a similar question to Brian's, and specifically, I don't know that we have anybody in town who's responsible for ongoing dam maintenance, vegetation removal. And so we get ourselves, those trees didn't grow. It took a long period of time for those trees to grow. And so, you know, what I'd look for from, I guess it's going to be you, not GZA, because GZA is going to give us our ongoing maintenance plan.
Right. They'll give us an operation and maintenance plan, and then it'll be up to me and the highway surveyor to make sure that it gets implemented.
And so how do we institutionalize that? I guess, for example, when GZA recommends that the outlet be evaluated and the sluice gate be regularly exercised, what I'm trying to see is that we put that under somebody's department, somebody's department responsibilities, and it ends up in somebody's calendar. I just want to institutionalize some type of ongoing program where that department, we don't have a DPW, right?
Right.
So I know this can be problematic sometimes.
So a lot of those tasks that would normally fall to a DPW would fall to the highway department in this town. And that's, and Scott has been very amenable to working with us on that. So that would, it would become part of their annual maintenance plan to operate those sluice gates and to keep the vegetation cleared.
And that's not been part of anybody's responsibility up to now, right?
Correct.
All right. And so some of where we are now is a result of, you know, allowing conditions to exist, where we haven't had specific areas of responsibility for people within that area, right? I mean, nobody's had the specific responsibility to operate the sluice gate. Nobody's had the responsibility to keep vegetation down.
That's my understanding, yes. That's my understanding.
You know, this is, this is one of, and I'm not critical. It's actually up to us. So if I'm critical, I'm critical of myself in looking for ownership and responsibility. So one thing Rick and I have talked about a number of times is who's going to own it from here forward. So we'll wait for that GZA report, and we'll wait for yours and Rick's recommendation and meeting with the various department heads, whoever's going to own it. And with that, if, you know, this and other tasks, if there's additional costs, digital budgeting requirements, we'll figure that out, too. I just want to make sure at the end of the day, we're just, the town's not back in the same position 10 years from now.
Right, right.
Because it hasn't been owned up to now. Okay. All right, thank you.
That would actually be a great thing to put on an O&amp;M plan using GIS. And then we would get reminders annually to go and do the dam inspections.
Well, there are lots of software tools that can remind us of our responsibilities and calendars of events and things that we have to do. We don't have everything on a GIS system today, but we have reminders of things to tell us that we've got to go out and do things.
Yep.
Scott, for example, has to empty catch basins. And he knows when to do that, and he knows it's on an annual basis, and he periodically does that. So whether it's Scott or whether it's somebody else, I'm okay with that as long as somebody's assigned, somebody has the responsibility, and we know who's doing it.
But traditionally, it always has been under the jurisdiction of the highway department, even with previous highway surveyors. Because I remember, and we have other dams as well.
Exactly.
And I remember that any memo came in always got passed down to the highway department. Now, you know, how it got prioritized and that type of thing. But it was always under the jurisdiction in terms of maintenance under the highway department.
And that would have been my follow-up, is what other dams, what other structures do we need to clear, operate sluice gates, and be part of an ongoing maintenance program independent of this? We ought to encompass all of that as we do.
Yeah, we should look at that and put it all into one overarching plan.
So hopefully, that's something that's going to come out of, after the GZA report, that's something that's going to come out of a report between you, Rick, and the highway surveyor. Okay, very good.
So I have the contracts with me. Jerry has, Jerry has looked at them.
Is there a motion for this, the move? Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill.
So the move specifically is to appropriate $94,550,000 of the $100,000 appropriated at town meeting for the contract work for Phase II by GZA?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's to sign the contract with GZA. There's already been an appropriation. We just need to sign the contract.
Right, which is for the amount of $94,550.
Right.
All right. I second that motion.
That's unanimous. You gave me three, two copies?
I gave you two copies.
Okay. There you go, right.
Yeah.
All right, Vaughn, and then EPA, stormwater? Yeah, you're going to sign this one.
I don't know, I always took the pens that don't write.
You're going to sign that.
By design.
Ricky does that. Rick does it.
Of course, gives me the pens that don't write.
Grab one of the, Brian.
I'll take another one out of the.
There you go.
There we go. Oh, this is full of them.
It's never the writer, it's always.
Bubbling over.
Boy.
GZA, boy, Tom Jenkins, right?
Yeah, Tom Jenkins, yeah. Been here for a long time.
Got to remember to write 15.
Thanks.
Okay, Vaughn, thank you on that.
All right, so.
So Vaughn, with that, as we have been doing, try to, if you can, when we have time, notify the butters in the area what we're doing and all that, okay?
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
Because I think they've been very happy with that, the two have been kept up to date on all that stuff. Okay. Okay, next is the stormwater update.
Stormwater permit. As you know, we submitted our comments on December 23rd. And on December 24th, the EPA issued an extension on the comment period. So it has been extended to February 27th. This board indicated to me that they would like me to discuss having a consultant take a look at the permit and take a look at our comments and maybe come up with some additional comments. So I have taken the liberty of talking to Weston and Sampson, who provide stormwater services. I know that they had looked at the permit on behalf of some of their other clients already. So they gave us a fairly good price to do this work for us. So for $1,850, they're willing to sit down and put together some additional comments for us and review the comments that we had already put together.
And that would strengthen our cause as far as.
And we can submit those before the February deadline.
And can you just mention some of those things that they'll be doing?
They will, well, they will be looking at the, they'll look at our comments that we made. But then they'll also look at the permit and how it's written from the perspective of any additional items that Milford may want to appeal in the future. And that's really the key, is to get a comment in for every particular point of the permit that we might want to appeal, so that we have the right to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a wise expenditure to have a consultant assist the town in something like this. This is, you know, talking about a lot of money, very complex. We have to thank, you know, Representative Fanetti for helping us with working with EPA and the extensions. And the letter that you wrote was very comprehensive. And we have the extension till February, right?
Correct.
Maybe 23rd.
Yep, correct.
Any comments on that, Brian?
No, I thought, well, I guess, yes. I thought your comments were excellent, Vaughn, in return to the EPA. Do you think it's necessary, or I guess I should say, do you think it's helpful to have Weston and Sampson kind of review what's already been submitted?
I think it's good to have a second set of eyes take a look at it. And they, because they serve a number of other communities on the stormwater side, they may have comments that they've come up with based on the needs in those other communities. So it may be helpful to us.
And I guess the only other thing that I would raise in relation to this issue, I did hear on the radio that the new Senator Ryan Fatman had met with, I think, the Secretary of Environmental or whomever. And apparently, there was some discussion with a contemplated litigation against EPA. So I don't know where that's at. If I could ask the town administrator maybe follow up to get a little bit more information on that, to see if that's something that maybe the new administration is contemplating.
Okay.
I've been in touch with Senator Fatman's aide as well, so I can follow up on that, too, and ask him.
Sure, yeah. I just didn't know where that was coming from, if that's something that's on the table right now or not. It was a bit of a surprise to me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's no good point. And before we get to Bill, and also Vaughn, I think the other towns, Franklin, Bellham, also have some type of a consultant helping them, correct?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they both do.
They have for months.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the minutes of the last meeting. And I wanted to be a little more specific as to what the consultant would be helping Vaughn with, because it's a great deal of information, and I'm concerned about the amount of money or lack thereof of the money or the costs associated with that review and additional comments. So specifically, I had asked that we put additional care and attention towards the science behind the 42% phosphorus removal. We're looking at old numbers prior to phosphorus legislation being put into place for, for.
Household fertilizers and landscaping, yes.
Thank you, fertilizers. And I wanted to see if that number was still valid. I know that there was a great deal of questions when the draft first came out about those numbers. And some, and you had alluded to, in what I would call a general reference, the science behind the decision of the EPA. I want to make sure that if we bring in a consultant, that they're going to strengthen our position in that. And so I'm worried about the amount of money that we're allocating for that consultant. Do we think the type of in-depth analysis into the science is going to be covered within that?
This overview will not include any additional sampling. And the reason that we are hesitant to go down that road right now is because the way the permit is written, communities that are proactive and go out and do sampling now are going to be penalized when the permit becomes final, because the clock will start ticking as soon as you have results.
Okay. So what is it about?
So it's in our favor to wait and go out and do our phosphorus sampling in conjunction with the other sampling that's going to be required by the permit. There'll be an economy of scale there, plus we'll get a little extra time to be able to deal with the issues.
So what is it that the consultant is going to do to strengthen our position as it relates to the science behind their decision? Let me ask it that way.
They can, they, I'll provide them with the documents that I reviewed. So the TMDL documents and the sampling results from the Charles River Watershed Association. They will look back through that. They'll also probably take a closer look at how the TMDL was developed. Because the way the TMDL was developed, they took the numbers for the Lower Charles and sort of backed into the numbers for the Upper Charles. So that's the conversation that I've had with them with respect to the phosphorus loading.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, we've still not exceeded our TMDL at any time in recent history, right?
The numbers from the Charles River Watershed Association show that we are not exceeding that number.
Okay. And you're comfortable that we'll get what we need for, what amount is it again, for the consultant?
$1,850.
So for $1,800, we're going to get a strengthened rapport that's going to give us greater latitude down the road, should, as people have discussed and we've discussed, should this be litigated?
Right. Or if there's any individual points on the permit that we would like to appeal.
And $1,800 is all you need?
That is, well, that, that's the advantage of, that's one of the reasons I picked these folks at Weston and Sampson, because I know that they have other stormwater clients. They've already read through the permit a dozen times. And they know, they know it inside and out. So that's part of the advantage of hiring somebody who does this type of work on a regular basis.
So it seems, excuse me, it seems to me at this point, though, in terms of the depth, it seems like we're just really identifying issues. And some of these questions later on, at least if we raise the issue, then we can go into greater depth in the future, right? I mean, if we don't raise the issue in the comment period, then we're not allowed to appeal.
Then we can't appeal it. So as long as we say we think that.
We have concerns about the science?
We think that the phosphorus levels, you know, cited in the permit from Milford may not be accurate. And we believe that phosph, that additional phosphorus sampling to back up what the real levels are should be done, then we have something to base an appeal on in the future.
Good. That's the level of the process we're at right now.
Right, right.
Is this consultant with any of the other communities questioned that portion of the 42%, specifically the science behind that?
I have not asked them that question. No, I have not seen their comments or the comments that they've made on behalf of other communities. Those aren't public yet.
Okay. All right.
They don't become public till the end of the comment period. But I can certainly ask them.
No, no, I guess the, my concern, it seems like short money for the work that we would be getting. And if you think it's sufficient amount of funds, I want to make sure we're giving you all the tools in the toolbox you need in order to be successful and position the town to be successful down the road. So if you're comfortable with the 1,800, and you're comfortable with this work being done in the next couple of weeks, or few weeks, I guess.
Yes.
Then I'm comfortable.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the fact that they're very experienced. You know them well, so they're going to give us more than $1,850 because of the relationship. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve. And then the question is, where would the funding come from?
Where's it coming from?
Do we have an account for that?
Yes, I've discussed it with Vaughn, and I've also discussed it with the finance director, and we will be able to pay for that. Not quite sure which account yet, but we will be able to.
Okay.
Yeah. Motion by Brian. Bill, you second?
I will second.
All set to go.
Thanks, Vaughn, on that. Vaughn? Do you have the same one as this?
Yes.
You need three?
Do we need three? If you want to sign three, that's fine.
I think it's just Dino to sign anyway. Thank you. Vaughn, you can put the date on for me, okay?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thanks, Vaughn. Okay, where are we next? The annual report?
Oh, yes, just quickly. The annual report is due in May. So until the new permit becomes finalized, we have to keep doing the updates every May under the old permit. GZA has been doing that for us. It makes sense to continue having GZA do that for us. The amount will be $6,800, and it will be paid for through the highway department budget.
Okay. Common Road Utility Pool? This is item F2 on the new business, if we could.
Familiar?
Yeah. Okay.
This is a less-than-perfect situation. There's a utility pole in the center of a cul-de-sac. The pictures I have provided are not of this particular location. They're...
I was going to say, I'm looking for the pole.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with it.
I talked to Bob Russell, who's our National Grid liaison, who's been great to deal with, and he, his opinion was that it would take three poles to replace that one pole. And because of the configuration, we'd end up with those three poles on private property. So one of the ideas that I had was, in a lot of places, Franklin, for example, those pictures came from Franklin, to reduce impervious area, communities are putting rain gardens in the middle of their cul-de-sacs. And putting in a little garden would provide some sort of a buffer zone to prevent cars from potentially hitting the pole. Right now, the pole is literally just right in the middle of the pavement. So, and it would provide, it would look nice, and it would certainly look better than it does now. That second picture is actually at the corner of Walnut Street and School Street. And it's a pretty, it's a pretty little, it's a pretty little area where there happens to be a pole. But in the summer, it's all nice summer flowers, and I believe it's pretty low maintenance. So that would be my suggestion for Carvin Road, rather than bringing in three new poles to replace one pole and put them on people's lawns.
So Vaughn, then, right, I agree about the impervious. And then something like this, then the maintenance would be done by the highway department?
Yes, yep.
Scotty know about that?
Yeah, he does. So, and the picture of the rain gardens in the bottom, the bottom one is a nice one on a cul-de-sac, but it would be much smaller than that. That one is, that one is quite large.
So is it going to get curbing, or how's it?
Yep, there would be curbing, and then it would be planted in the center so that it, so that it would define the area.
You know, Dean asked a good question. Scott had an opportunity to look at that particular intersection, I mean cul-de-sac?
Scott has looked at it, yes.
The reason why I ask is obviously he has to plow around it, and it's a tight space.
Yeah.
And so if we start building out from the pole where it is and what people are used to backing out to, have you talked to the neighbors about the options and why we would go in this direction versus the three poles? I'm sure they'd be in agreement, but I guess the question is, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to be on Carvin Road, it's a tight, it's a tight cul-de-sac. I don't know how they back out of their driveways today without occasionally hitting that pole. And so when we talk about an island, we're talking about taking up some space. That not only does it represent a change, but it reduces the turning radius and back-out radius of everybody coming out of their driveways on that cul-de-sac.
Well, it would be much smaller than what's shown on those pictures, but we have not. We can certainly solicit the comments from the neighbors. I wanted to know how this board wanted to proceed first before doing that.
Yeah, so my sense is that your instincts are good, and that this is probably a viable solution. But I think it ought to get to the specifics with the neighbors who have lived down there all those years, and talk about what the diameter of that island's going to be, and kind of ease them into the thought process of it's going to change. I can imagine some people are going to be hitting those curbs for a while. If you do the same thing day in, day out, and suddenly there's an island there, it's tight, so.
Probably a good point to see if the neighbors would be okay with that.
And, you know, before they see the work, they understand that the alternative was three poles.
Right.
I think that does a lot to get buy-in and say, okay, how big is this going to be?
Less than two, two things, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I would absolutely work with those neighbors.
All right, good on that.
Do you want me to give you a quick update on Godfrey Brook?
Yes, please.
We are in the process of finalizing the design and permitting. We are planning to put the project out for advertisement on February eighteenth. We'll open the bids on March eleventh. We will ask the bidders to hold their bids for ninety days. And then when we go to town meeting in May, we will have the actual number for construction from the bids that we receive. Assuming everything goes smoothly and we get the appropriation, we'll have a notice to proceed by the beginning of June, and hopefully the contractor can get mobilized by the beginning of July. We're going to ask the contractor to substantially complete the project by the end of the year. And then final paving and plantings and landscaping will wait until that following spring. So we're going to set a final completion date of June first sixteen. I have sent a letter to John Fernandy's office and Senator Fatman's office about the funding that was earmarked in the environmental bond bill for Godfrey Brook. And I have talked to both of them since the letter went out. So we are pursuing that as a funding option, but I believe we still should plan to go to town meeting. If those funds become available, then, you know, then we can obviously reassess.
Vaughn, the other thing I do is, you know, since Senator Fatman isn't, you know, he's in here now and starting his work for the district, I would call him and invite him to your office, because we have a lot of projects, a lot of things going on. Just bring him up to date and let him know what's going on, background information, so that he can, you know, better understand the projects I need, and maybe he can work with the administration and John as far as getting additional monies and assistance.
Okay.
Okay?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have reached out to him and spoken with him, and I will be meeting with him next week, so perhaps I can have Vaughn join me at that meeting. I have a number of items that I'd like to discuss with him, and he said he'd be happy to sit with us.
Great.
I think a phone call's great, but a personal meeting, sharing information, he can bring it back. He may have some questions. He can bring it back to his aide, you know, back and forth. I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, you know what would be helpful for me, Mr. Chairman, is that that meeting include an agenda so that the board members have anything additionally they might request to be talked about, then maybe we can provide some input. Otherwise, we just don't know what will be talked about.
So that's next week, Rick?
I'm going to meet with him the twenty-second. Is that Thursday, I believe?
Anything else, Vaughn?
Milford Pond, they are essentially waiting until spring to start work. They have been out doing some survey and some checking the elevations at the top of the dam, but otherwise there has been no work.
And that's another item, I think, Brian, you would ask a question, Bill. That's another dam that in the future we're going to have to be doing something.
Yes.
Out of the work that will be done in September, I mean in March, we're doing the flashboards now, and that will save the town money, but Vaughn was able to get that into the bid. So I think they'll be doing that soon. Have they already done it?
They have not done it yet. They will be doing it soon.
Okay. Any other questions for Vaughn?
No, I just wanted to go back to the Godfrey Brook, because I looked over that correspondence that you sent off to John, and we look as, it looks as though that current project is going to be about two million dollars?
Yes, it does.
Of which we've got the eight hundred thousand on the FEMA grants. So you were looking for a lease of the, well, actually the full four million, which would be great. We could plan to go forward on the whole thing, but...
The Godfrey Brook assessment that was done a few years back estimated about six million dollars worth of work needed to be done. So if we could get the full four million dollars, then we can just move forward and do as much as possible.
And, yeah, so this is good. You sent this out to John with copies, I see. Hopefully we'll get some positive information on that. If not, then the goal is to get the one point three at town meeting, correct?
Correct, yep.
And that, in order to, you could talk to Senator Fatman.
Absolutely, absolutely.
He's on the CC list.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes I think, you know, bringing it up, all the information, how important it is. We've been working on that for a long time. So, all right. Bill, anything else for Vaughn?
No, nothing else.
Okay.
Vaughn, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Much appreciated. Okay, that concludes the public hearings and scheduled appointments. Now we'll go to the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Update on the heater project, E and A Systems. We'll begin replacing the heating units on the first floor of the town hall on January nineteenth. We have a replacement schedule so that each office knows when their units will be replaced. We hope to have all units to be installed by February twentieth. We're going to start with the units that need replacement the most and proceed accordingly. We also, the second project that E and A will be doing, we'll be making the upgrades to the boiler at town hall beginning February twenty-seventh. That work, as you know, will include replacing the makeup air unit, installing a bypass valve, and system balancing. That is expected to take three days. We have a final completion on the town hall window project report. You know that involved full restoration of all the windows on the first and second floors, and repairs and repainting of all windows on the basement level. In addition, we did find that some of the basement windows had failed seals, so they were re-glazed. The final contract price with change orders was a little over three hundred and four thousand dollars. The appropriation in North Town Meeting was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And as the members know, we're going to use some of that money now for the replacement of the gutters, which is the next project at town hall. A while ago, I was asked to look into replacement of the four ninety-five sign at Route sixteen and Cedar Street. We will, in fact, be replacing that sign with a smaller sign. We also will be relocating it closer to Haywood Street. Both Vaughn and myself have spoken with both residents and the business owner in the area. They were consulted both on the sign itself and the location, and they are in agreement with this resolution. We're just waiting to receive the sign from the state, and then the highway department has been advised, and they will install it for us. As I think board members know, we had a little issue with telephones at town hall last week. At various times on two days, they were going on and off, so we had trouble making calls out and receiving calls in. I just want the board to know the failure was due to a carrier issue involving a bad card and wiring issues in their central office. There were no problems with town hall, IT, or the telephone system itself, which, as you know, is a recently installed system. And finally, we just received word that, good news from the State House, as Governor Baker has directed the Mass Department of Transportation to release one hundred million in Chapter ninety bond authorizations. I just learned today that Milford's Chapter ninety apportionment for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen has been increased from eight hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars to one million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. In addition, Governor Baker has pledged that there'd be no cuts to municipal aid. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, any questions for, Bill?
Yeah, I had brought up that sign request on directing people to four ninety-five, and it was on Route sixteen, Main Street. It was a large sign. I just want to say thank you, Rick, for following up. This is the constituent service things that we need to hit on all cylinders, and I appreciate you following up. I know it's a great deal of work with the neighbors, working with the businesses, and I appreciate the attention to detail and the resolution that you've had to come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. And their old business, Brian, any items?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, actually, and I bring this up under old business, because it is, in fact, old business. We got a letter from the Milford Girls Softball League, which I think both of you got. And apparently the signs that they had been putting up, I think off of Tank Field, were taken down by the building commissioner in violation of the town bylaw. And, you know, in fact, they are. So as I went through my file, and I think you'll both recall, we dealt with this issue back in two thousand and nine, so I wanted to see what the outcome was at that point. We had sent requests to the building department and also the town planner. And what came back from the building department was essentially an allocation of resources. And the building inspector at that time, Mr. DeLuca, indicated that, given the current level of staffing, the most effective approach for sign compliance was to utilize an enforcement hierarchy. And he gave us a number of levels in terms of enforcements of business signs and so forth. And Larry came back with a memo with some pointed suggestions in terms of amending the zoning bylaw for signs. And, you know, that's pretty much the way it stayed. We didn't really follow up on amending that sign bylaw. And, you know, I think everything was operating, you know, status quo. And from what I understand now, there are apparently some complaints to the business, to the building inspector, and that's what precipitated this action. So, yeah, I don't think it's anybody's intent to try to deprive a local, you know, charitable, sports, theater, whatever, organization from some signage. But, you know, it just doesn't fit into the existing bylaw right now. So I'd like to try to ask us to do what, you know, we probably should have done back in oh-nine, send this off to town council, to have them consult with the town planner and the building department, to bring us back a proposed amended sign bylaw, which would take into account some of the concerns that we have for some of these local organizations. And of course, this is a very touchy issue, you know, there are constitutional protections, regulations really have to be content neutral. So I think it does need to be drawn carefully. And, you know, I think the resources in the building department have changed over the last few years. I think you recall back then, we were dealing with the overcrowded, and there were the apartments and the housing, and I think the building department was preoccupied with that, and signs kind of took a backseat. So if this is going to be the situation now, then we really need to take a good, hard look at this zoning bylaw and come up with something that works for the community.
I know a few years ago, the, some of the neighbors in the area called me, I called the superintendent and asked. A lot of times, those signs are up for a long time, and I think one of the things that the neighbors are complaining about is, you know, once the event has expired, takes the signs down. So I think it happens for a while, but then after a while, people get lax and all that. And, you know, we can understand, and I think we have to watch it, because we have to, you know, we just can't allow one entity, and then other people are going to be saying, what about me, and situations like that. So I think whatever we can do to satisfy, I think, the comments from the neighbors in making it, you know, sometimes that area does look kind of, you know, all kinds of signs, and there's signs falling off. So if we could do something, and also understand that the school department's trying to do something advertising for the kids. So I think there's a happy medium that we could probably reach. Bill, do you have any comments on that?
I do, because, let me say this. First, I'm troubled by the where we are today. It's not my intent, and it shouldn't be the building inspector's intent, to remove signs for Milford Girls Softball, high school theater workshops, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, can drives. They've been, these same signs have been at that intersection for a very long time. I thought that the prior building inspector used professional discretion. I was comfortable with that. If, you know, there's a few things I'm troubled with. I have the correspondence between Milford Girls Softball and John Erickson, where he mentions how he's stuck enforcing the zoning bylaws as written. You know, that feels very bureaucratic. I don't have any desire to remove Milford Girls Softball. I don't want the building inspector's job to be taken up with removing these signs for the Milford Girls Softball or theater projects or whatever. It was just three months ago, we were here talking about how he had difficulty, how he had difficulty keeping up with the task force work, and now we find that there's enough time to remove girls softball signs. We're going to get into an area of selective enforcement. I'd prefer to see, rather than John Erickson out removing these signs, I'd rather see John Erickson working with the planning department and town council to see how we can provide these types of opportunities for... This is exactly the type of activity we want our young people involved in. We want them involved in theater. We want them involved in sports. Our kids have been involved in sports. And frankly, I was a member of the Milford Girls Softball Board of Directors myself at one point. I don't want these signs removed. So I'd like that activity to stop, because we're not going to go around and remove all the signs from all the ball fields. We're going to get into selective enforcement issues. I'd rather see their efforts being put on a bylaw, benchmarking what other communities are able to do, still giving these theater groups and nonprofits an opportunity to advertise upcoming signup for softball league or whatever. So if we could do that, instead of removing the signs, tell the neighbors who are complaining or anybody else is complaining that we're working on restructuring our bylaws so that we can come up with something that works for everybody, I'd rather see time spent on that.
But I do believe, though, Bill...
Also, one of the other things, I'd like to also get a copy of all the complaints that he's received. Because I'd like to see those, and I'd like to work with those people. If I have to work with the neighbors until we have a bylaw, I'd be happy to. I find the response to the softball league and board directors kind of bureaucratic. This is what I expect from, this is not customer-oriented. It's not, I'm stuck, I have to do it. And, you know, I don't know the language that I see in the response in terms of that type of location being the most offensive. I don't know why it's offensive today and wasn't offensive for the last twenty years, so.
But I do believe, and I agree with both of you, I do believe that once the activity... But I do believe, and I agree with both of you, I do believe that once the activity is expired or no longer prevalent, I do believe that the school department would take the sign down.
Absolutely, yeah, signs need to be removed, the responsible for them. And those are things we can strengthen in our bylaw, and if it's past the event that's dated on there, then the group should be responsible for removing them. That's not what we're talking about. In this case, we're talking about a case where a sign that had been put up for a number of years at that location was removed by the building inspector.
Rick, you had some dots on this?
Yes, I mean, we've talked about it, I talked to John about it. I think it does make sense to have Town Council, he and Town Planner, relook at the bylaw. We need to obviously recognize the rights of these groups to advertise. Obviously, their groups are encouraged here in Milford, whether they be sports, band, theater, whatever. I just also think we need to balance the rights of those neighbors, and hopefully, we can successfully do that. And that's what I would entertain the board.
And just so you know, Rick, I'm not an advocate of him going down all the ball fields and removing all the sponsor signs from the fences. But those are also not compliant, and we're not taking those down. So, we have to be very careful about what we're doing, and I don't want to selectively enforce on some groups and not others. I don't want the signs removed.
Maybe you could have that meeting get back to us with something, Rick?
Sure.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that we've got to get an understanding, and Bill, I don't, you know, disagree with anything you're saying about advocacy groups, and I think we need to get a new bylaw that would allow that kind of flexibility. Unfortunately, the bylaw that we have now prohibits that. And if, in fact, he were to allow a sign up there, it would, in fact, be selective enforcement. And, you know, the way that was cutting around before, in the past, I guess, was the building inspector said that, you know, well, I mean, his memo of August seventeenth, two thousand and nine exactly spells out the way it is. So, I think, given the legal parameters right now, it's not the kind of situation that's going to satisfy the community groups. So, that's why I think that we really need to focus on doing a new bylaw that's going to allow that flexibility for the community groups, and that we're not in a position of selective enforcement allowing one sign to stay and another sign not to stay.
We are, we're not taking down all the signs in town. We've targeted some specific areas, we're responding to complaints from a neighbor, and we're not enforcing all the sign, the sign bylaw across the town. So, if we can agree on that, then we're still in the selective enforcement. I'd rather see the work rather than, because I agree with Tony at the time. It was an issue of bandwidth, it was an issue of resources akin. Three months ago, the same building inspector came in front of us, said he didn't have time for task force. Now we've got time to remove the signs. I don't get it, I don't understand it, and I'd rather see that work go towards the bylaw rather than these nonprofit groups having their signs taken down and being contacted to say, "Come pick up your sign." I think that's unacceptable, and these groups have been doing this for years. And it's not selective enforcement if the police chief doesn't write a ticket for every thirty-one mile an hour car going by on Main Street either. It's an issue of priorities, and it's an issue of.
I think you're doing thirty-two miles an hour, right?
He could spend a hundred percent of his time on Main Street issuing tickets. It's not selective enforcement, it's priorities.
And again.
It shouldn't be a high priority.
I don't disagree with you in terms of the goal. In fact, I'm sure all three of us want the community group signs to be there. So, I think that we just have to really look at the proper way to do that.
Why are we removing them, Brian? I'm not arguing, I agree with you, I think we're all in agreement, but why are they being removed?
The extent that I get is that, you know, they're.
Unacceptable.
They're apparently neighborhood complaints, you know, I don't know, do you know what I'm saying? I only know the letter that I got from the softball group. So, you know, to be honest with you, you know, we should have done this in two thousand and nine. But, and Larry gave us a good framework of a bylaw to go forward. But, you know, for whatever reason, you know, things, other things take priority, and it's not something that this board followed through on. That's okay, so that's where we're at right now. The bylaw, we know, is dated. It doesn't give us the flexibility that we want for community groups. So, you know, let's have Town Council spearhead that and come back with a bylaw that works.
Can we get agreement until we have that bylaw, no more signs removed?
I don't know that that's our call, I mean, he's the enforcement officer.
Yes, he uses judgment and all that. The only thing I say is the school department, when something is expired and the signs went up there for a long time, they should take it down. They have enough people to go around to take it down. They go by that way all the time, so. And on the other thing, we have to use common sense and try to come up with something which, you know, satisfies this issue.
Okay.
All right, Rick?
Hope he gets the message.
Okay, that was, Bill, anything else on the old business? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the memo that we got from Mark Shane on the Finance Committee. And, you know, this was regarding the FinComs process for major expenditures. And, you know, there are a few things here that just don't seem to mesh with me. You know, when you look at it, it said it's reiterating the process for planning major expenditures. You know, I don't know that that process was ever fully put forth in the first place. It mixes capital items, expense items, and bonding, three real different universes, all under a capital expenditure subcommittee and a capital plan. Of course, you know, a capital item may or may not be bonded. You know, an expense item could be, you know, a service contract, doesn't have to be a capital plan. So, there's a lot of mixes in here that I don't really think is cohesive. It talks about some being on some two years prior on a funding list. And then, of course, the process will be waived for emergencies unless they could have been foreseen, which, to me, I think flies in the face of what the generally accepted definition of emergency is. So, now that we have, you know, Zach as our interim, you know, financial director, I'd like to pass this by him and see if he could kind of streamline this and bring a little bit of cohesion and sense to it and put forth that and get it to us, and then submit that to the Finance Committee too. Because I just think that this memo is a bit disjointed, and I'm not sure if it's been fully thought through.
Thank you. Bill, do you have any comments on that?
No.
I, when I first saw that, matter of fact, I spoke to Zach today. And I think we're all, you know, doing the right thing, the right thing here. I think Milford works very well together. The warrant is our responsibility. We open the warrant and close the warrant out of respect to our department heads. If the chief has something, senior center director has something, they can submit it to us. I would not be, and I think Mark's trying to do the right thing. I just think that if we all work together on this. First of all, we need flexibility, we can't be rigid. Talking about emergency items come up at times, a two-year, prior to two years requesting funding. I think the most important thing is that we need common sense. We have to do what's good for the town, for the residents, cost-effective, save now or we do it three years from now and cost more, and affordability. So, I think all the articles that are presented, and by the way, when we take on the articles, the Finance Committee formulates the budget, they come up with avenues for possible funding, working with the financial team. At an annual town meeting, if ten residents want something to be included in the warrant, it gets included. In a special, it's a hundred individuals signing the petition. It hasn't happened many times in the past, over my thirty-three years, I think it happened a couple of years ago. But if you want to have a guideline, if you want to come up with something that, as far as capital planning, a five-year plan, I think our administrators put something together. But, just think now, in the past November, whenever it was, October, we had several items come up. We had the Christmas decorations. Now, the Christmas decorations was worked on over the summer by a very hard-working committee. I think the price was twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. We're either going to use it out of free cash or appropriation, or there was this account that we used for the monies. Now, that wasn't planned for, but I think it was a damn good thing for the town. It looked good, it was good for the community. The Finance Committee had the tablets, and anything that we can do to assist the Finance Committee with information, computers and all that, we did it. That wasn't talked about for two years. The renovation of the senior center, that was something that came up, and I think we had a room that we renovated upstairs. It's going to be good, it's going to be good for the seniors. If we do it now, we save money compared to having it done in two or three years. The police chief, the police chief comes forward and says, "Hey, I need this thing now, it's good for the officers, for safety," or the fire chief. So, I think that's, you know, the way it has to be done. We have a capital planning committee, we have a five-year plan, but I think it has to be flexible, it has to be fluid. And I think as we, as elected by the public, by the residents, if we feel something is in the best interest of the community and it should be brought up to speed or pushed forward, and it's not under any particular plan, then I think we should do that. So, I just think that the things that were put in place over the past ten years, fifteen years, have worked out well. It's not a question of spending money inappropriately or not prudently. It's getting, and you talked about the working with the residents. If we meet with certain residents or certain areas and they need something, and we've been working on it for six months, and it's something that should be done, I think we should discuss it. And if we have disagreement, fine, and then we go upstairs, and then town meeting decides. So, I think, you know, Mark's letter is, I think is trying to go in the right direction. And those are my comments, and I've talked to Zach, and I'm going to have Zach come in on the twenty-sixth. He'll be giving us a full financial picture of the town, where we are, and I've also asked him to address some of those items. So, if you could report those comments for the chairman of the FinCom, Rick?
Sure.
I'd appreciate it. Anything else on the old business, Brian?
No.
Bill, old business?
Just two items. It was reported in the Milford Daily News that Milford, through the significant efforts of Representative Fernandez and Senator Moore, were able to get the language adjusted within the, from the legislature regarding the charter for the Milford Water Company. I just want to publicly thank them for doing that now. Great effort, I know we gave it to them late, when the session was not a formal session. That required some Herculean effort by specifically John to shepherd that through, go through the readings, make sure it was constitutional, and then pass it forward. And the governor, on his way out the door, signed that bill, so, great job. And, you know, we thank them, we thank Representative Fernandez and Senator Moore for getting that done.
You know, one thing I'd like to add on that bill, just quickly, and I didn't see that article, but, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't thank Jerry Moody for that also.
You're right.
You know, Jerry really originated that whole thing, put it for us, and then worked it through John and Dick. So, you know, Jerry really, you know, deserves a kudos too on that.
He brought it to us a couple of times in exact session, we talked about it. And, you know, this would be great for future boards, to have more flexibility, more authority, and, you know, whether or not we take over the water company somehow.
Yeah, whether it happens or not, but at least we'd get to present a town meeting of dollar value that we weren't able to do before and would have effectively killed even further investigation, in my opinion.
It's a process that really makes sense.
Sure.
So, that was just one issue I wanted to bring up and publicly acknowledge. That was what I had brought up under old business, because it was old business for us. The other question I had, we've had the, I'm going to keep bringing it up every meeting because we've had the World Band Report for IT, specifically talking about our threats and weaknesses as it relates to our IT. The school system's working on seven, eight-year-old servers. And I know both the town and the school system are dependent upon the handshakes of payroll and a whole bunch of other things. I wanted to see if we were able to identify sources of funding for some of the servers, routers, and switches that were needed to minimize that threat and risk.
I spoke with Superintendent Trembley today, I know Zach spoke with Kathy Perry, a business manager. It's our understanding that they met to discuss their budget on Saturday. And they will be, I believe, committing funds, but they have not done so yet because they want to digest the full IT plan that Paul Livis, our IT director, gave to them. So, as of this date, I cannot confirm that funds have been committed. We have strongly urged, and I think it will happen, that we will do two things. One is a mapping of all the schools that is crucial. And the second thing, as you explained, Bill, is we need hardware, switches, and servers. Actually, was the other thing I think we need, that we have identified that would be installed at the high school, which would then become the hub. The issue becomes with the mapping, it may unfortunately, or most likely, I shouldn't say unfortunately, will identify additional needs, the switches, routers, etc.
Yeah, it's been neglected for a great.
So, I think we are there now, that we should be doing this, and it makes sense not to wait.
And then, for the benefit of the board and everybody else that might be listening, the reason why I bring up the school system servers and network is, we're dependent upon them for feeds of information. They're dependent upon us to make sure that we process that data and information. And we share, the director of IT is also the director of IT for the school department. So, it's a shared resource. And, you know, I just want to make sure that Paul Livis has the, as the director of IT, has the resources and full commitment from the people who are holding the dollars. That position's been a revolving door. We've gone through, what, three and four years. I want to make sure that, rather than just be supportive, we're committed to that budget and that process. I know, Brian, you were one of the first to raise it, our fragmented IT system and infrastructure. And with the assessments we're getting, we're getting, we're being told, there's some significant weaknesses in those systems. And so, I'll just keep asking, and hopefully, we'll get to a point where we can get that.
It should be soon.
I know you're dependent, the IT director's dependent upon those funds and commitment of those funds.
Rick, just along with that, I'd like to ask a question. As far as the government side, Town Hall, we all said what we need financially and the resources and all that.
As far as this building, if you remember, we did do an appropriation when we set up the IT department. So, this building has two new servers. Most, if not all, of the computers have been brand new. So, we have unified the systems we use, the computers we use. So, this building itself is in pretty good shape, not all the way there.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It still needs to.
Absolutely.
But I think the issue right now is, I don't know, okay? We have the town government side, I know we're working collaboratively together, but the town government side may have everything, the monies that we need. But there's a school, the school department has to appropriate some monies to do those things.
There has to be a strong focus, in my opinion, on the schools, right?
Yeah, I mean, we have to put the truth on the table here. I mean, if they need four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand to make it work, I don't know if you can appropriate entirely all that. But, they have to put money on the table, they have to get it done. Because if they don't, it's the same old thing. And if this continues to go like this, over another year or so, a year and a half ago, you know, maybe the town should take care of, our side, we take care of our business, and the school takes care of theirs. Now, maybe that's not the right way to go, but I just think that if the school department, our department, I mean, our side, if we need a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty, we should appropriate that, get it done. And if the school department needs, they need a lot more, then they should be working, and hopefully, they'll come to some resolution on that.
And the initial injection of funds, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars, just to give you a sense of,
Correct, yeah.
You know, upfront, right away, let's get some servers, let's get some switches and routers, and at the same time, map the existing system so that we know where all the connections are made. So, it's not a significant amount within a sixty million dollar budget, they are more than that now.
And if that's the case, it should be easy, Bill.
Yeah, in my opinion, too.
Now, Rick, I think from what you said, they may need more than sixty thousand, right?
They need a lot more.
Oh, no, this mapping will show, that's just a start, there is also.
Talk about plans and come up with a two- or three-year plan where the money is obtained.
We have that, and the third part of it would be increase the bandwidth. And there is a plan in place to do that, that's more a monthly fee, that either it could be budget-driven.
This is important, it has to be done. If not done this year, it should be done next year.
I hope we all, I hope we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Yep, it's aged, it's an aged infrastructure, and Brian appropriately raised the issue some.
Couple of years ago, right?
Couple of years ago, probably, yeah.
Things take time, but they happen. Rick, on the new business, the interim assistant town treasurer?
Yes, you have in front of you a request from Kelly Capice, temporary treasurer, to appoint Ms. Janet Ferrera to the position of interim assistant town treasurer. I also recommend appointing Ms. Ferrera to this position. I'm confident she'll be very capable in this position, as you may recall. As you may recall, she has served in this position when the, we had the transition, um, uh, when our prior treasurer left.
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Finance Director is also, um, in support of this also, just to make that clear.
Motion, uh, we need a motion? Moving seconded, and that's, uh, any discussion, that's unanimous. You know, certainly wanna appreciate all the work that Zach has done, our town accountant, as far as getting these finances all together. And like I said, and on the next meeting, the next meeting, he'll be coming in, laying out his recommendations as we move forward. So, he's working hard at that.
Step two, we already addressed.
Yes.
Step two, we already addressed with, uh, straight line in the carbon road.
On Fiskville Road, we have to take the sign down, right? Okay, is there a motion to take the sign down?
Second.
Motion, seconded, unanimous. We also have another one on Camp Street, that we removed the thirty mile per hour signs. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill.
Take the sign down, so that the speed limit will be thirty.
Yeah. So, Chief, we've been doing this, and so we do the eighty-five percentile, it doesn't come out the way it should, then we take it down.
It'll be thirty, but we don't wanna tell anybody.
Okay. Uh, let me see. Okay, uh, LCT Construction Services, the permit to obstruct.
I'll move.
This is for January sixteenth, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, that's unanimous. Rick, under, can you briefly talk about the, uh, national grid, the double poles?
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but presently, as you, as you see from the report, there are sixty-one double poles. They removed four, unfortunately, they had installed three for what they call reliability reasons, which is basically upgrades. Um, and then they added another one, which was discovered during the Verizon survey, so, um, hopefully...
Added four to the list.
Well, yeah, so that's my originally comment, and we stay neutral.
That's okay.
I know they are working on it. Hopefully, when the survey is complete, we'll have a better indication of, um, where we are with the double poles. But, um, I think you heard Barney say, and I agree, that, that Bob Russell has been, uh, very cooperative in, in assisting us here.
Any progress made towards the aging of these double poles?
Uh, as soon as, as soon as that Verizon report is done, I'm expecting that to be included, so that we will be able to see that. I'll get an update for you on that, yes.
Maybe we can use Barney's consultant to help us out on that. It just seems that, uh, go up three, go back forward, I mean, it's just amazing.
It's a little bit frustrating.
Okay, we'll go together, all right?
Yeah.
All right. I think, uh, anything else on the old business, Brian?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, the double pole, we took care of that. The ju- police chief's report. Chief, I just wanna, you know, I think we, we tell you periodically, but, you know, great job with the, uh, the annual license, licensed establishments activity report. Uh, I can remember, you know, probably eight years ago, it was probably a couple of inches, uh, thick. But now it's down to a, you know, a manageable level. We are a, a large community, we have a lot of establishments, things are gonna happen. And, uh, the only, uh, uh, I'm sure the, uh, board members will have some comments. The only thing that kinda got me a little bit nervous, it's happened before. At McDonald's, one thirty-nine, uh, Salt Lake Street, with the syringes. I mean, the syringes being in the, what you have, Chief?
That's right, that's what popped out at me.
There are three or four, three or four times where they found syringes in the, uh, ladies' room, or men's room, and all that, you know? That's gonna happen, but the, I, I mean, not that it should happen, but, uh, you know, what can we, is there anything we can do to...
You really can't. I mean, i- i- you know, the bathrooms are such that they can't monitor them, so people go and, uh, secret themselves there for that very reason. Um, but keep in mind, we find syringes all over town. So, you're getting the licensed establishments. Uh, Louisa Lake, you know, you go up there, and there were a dozen syringes that people called. So, and, and the difficulty is, they decriminalized the syringes, and they did, you know, to, to deal with the issue of, of AIDS. So, someone that's addicted to drugs can go into a pharmacy, uh, without a prescription, and it's twenty-five cents, and they sell them a, a clean syringe. So, from a public health perspective, it made a lot of sense. The difficulty is disposing of them properly. So, I, I can name in the past week, uh, we've gone down and picked up, easy, a, a couple dozen syringes throughout town. You, you get calls, people, they're on the sidewalk here, or in a park, or in other places. Um, we do have Sharps containers, uh, at the station, we've had them, working with the hospital. They, they're willing to take them from us, once we fill them. Um, and then, we added recently a donation from CBS Pharmacy. So, in the lobby of the police station, there's now a vault. So, we do the drug takebacks, uh, working with DEA, we now have a vault. People can bring their prescription drugs, that they no longer need, or that are expired, and put them in the vault, and we'll make sure that they disposed of properly.
Anytime, Chief, not just on election day.
Anytime, twenty-four hours a day, seven, eight, the vault is there. We, we clear it out once a week. Um, so, I thank CBS, they, they were kind enough to pay for that vault. But we also have a Sharps container there, for the same reason. So, um, there are people that are addicted to drugs. But then you have people that are diabetic, uh, and it's removing their Sharps containers. The only other thing I'd like to point out is, our trash collection company, uh, if you have someone that's diabetic and they get a lot of Sharps, they'll actually give them containers that they put in a prepaid postage, and mail it to them. And they'll dispose of it properly. So, people shouldn't have the syringes laying around, or, or have a need to throw them in the trash. Uh, presents a danger for those people that collect the trash. Um, so, i- if someone has that prescription, and, and they even need to get rid of their Sharps, they can work with the Board of Health, uh, with Paul Mazakelli, uh, they can bring the Sharps to us, and we'll take care of them. But even individuals that, you know, may be addicted to drugs, and, and it's just a proper way to dispose of that item.
Chief, I know, and, and, oh, thanks for bringing it to our attention, as, as far as like at Louisa Lake and all that stuff. But it's interesting, though, um, you know, we find syringes here at McDonald's, I think, reports before. But I, I don't think I ever saw anything, um, like syringes at some of the other establishments.
Yeah, I, well, we, if you remember, I mean, you know, Dunkin' Donuts, I think, are in this particular report, where they, you know, went to the, their establishments. Um, you know, we've had overdoses, uh, I think one of them there is, uh, an overdose at Honeydew.
Right.
Uh, three individuals, one overdoses, the others flee, and we, we got them over near Big Lot. We've had overdoses at other retail establishments that are licensed, you know, so I record them for the board's benefit.
So, it's just scary when we see it.
Unfortunately, we run into overdoses, we're doing multiples per week. Uh, I, I have my Narcan on order, it's, hopefully by the end of the month, we'll be up and running. Uh, done all the training, every police officer, so we'll be able to administer. But, I mean, Robbie Tosino, the, the firefighters, and, and the paramedics, I, I mean, they've, they've brought back several people, they do every week. You know, so it's, it's really epidemic proportions across the state, um, and literally across the nation. You know, we had a very large heroin arrest the other day. These individuals were coming from Lowell, uh, and, and selling heroin here in neighboring communities. And so, working with, uh, the district attorney, Joe Early's office, uh, and the troopers, and, and other detectives assigned there, DEA and others, uh, we were on these guys. So, we worked with them too, 'cause it was multiple communities. And using state police resources, we were able to track them and, uh, keep a good handle on them. And, and they recovered a sizable quantity of heroin, cocaine, and, uh, oxy content, so, uh, that's where we're seeing the biggest difficulty, is individuals that get caught up in the pills. And then the pills are expensive on the street. So, the heroin's not cheap.
Oh.
Heroin's very cheap.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, uh, Chief, and, and I appreciate all you've indicated, and, and I think your department's doing a great job, as I've told you in the past, with the seemingly insurmountable drug, drug problem that we have. But, you know, when I look at this report, Tom, you know, I see hypodermic needles on here, one, two, three, four times at that McDonald's. Every other place, there's only one other hypodermic needle up at Royal Buddha. Now, the thing that I find troubling is, you know, I guess, some of these others, you know, they're bar rooms, people are there at night for the most part, McDonald's is not. You know, McDonald's families go to, kids go to. And when you look at these times, it's scary. You know, nine fourteen AM, you know, on August twelfth, four twenty-seven PM. Uh, and, and these syringes are not in the bathroom, they're in the parking lot. So, you know, kids can be up there doing kinds of stuff. You know, the, the, the management at McDonald's has to take more responsibility for this. I, I'm sorry, you know, that, that's just not acceptable. It's, it's an area that invites families and children, and, you know, this isn't, you know, I'm not seeing two, three in the morning. You know, I'm seeing times, uh, twelve thirty, four PM, November second, um, syringes are in the parking lot near the dumpster. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the town administrator, send a letter to the management of McDonald's, and have them arrange a meeting, uh, with the police chief. And, you know, I think you've gotta walk these people through some of the different programs. You know, maybe it means hiring more security there. God forbid, it might cost them some money. Um, they've gotta have more eyes and ears on the grounds to see what's going on. When, when, when they invite children and families to, to those kinds of establishments, they have that responsibility. I mean, I'm just not gonna let that one go. I understand, you know, drugs are everywhere, and there's, there's heroin and all of that sort of thing. This is a family place, it's gotta stop.
No, fair enough.
It's gotta stop.
I, I think, but I do wanna point out, i- as it relates particularly to that McDonald's, if you look at the calls that we get there, i- i- it is the managers and the staff who are contacting.
You know something, that, that only takes it so far, you know? Oh, hey, there's a crime being committed, but it's okay, 'cause the manager and the employee called in. Okay, that's great, I appreciate that.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I understand that's a factor, but, you know, the other factor is, they gotta make it stop.
Mm-hmm.
They gotta make it stop. So, you know, there shouldn't be syringes all over the parking lot at McDonald's, period. Shouldn't be there. I mean, that's not the way to do business. Not for a, 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 a restaurant like McDonald's, that invites family and children in there.
Chief, yeah, that's why I brought it up. And the thing is, that's, one of, that McDonald, they're open twenty-four hours a day, right? I mean, you know, we approved this before. I was kinda a little bit hesitant, I mean, I don't know why you have to be open at four or five o'clock in the morning. I just think you're looking, but that was in the afternoon, but I just think that, um...
That's when the syringe was found.
Yeah. But if you can talk to them, as, as suggested by Brian. And then, uh, maybe if it happens again, uh, we can have, they must have, they must have, what, two or three managers? McDonald's, right?
Right, there's a, there's a general manager, and then there are assistants.
Yeah.
But then there's the corporation folks, you know, and they have their own security personnel as well.
Yeah. You know, just on the side, I don't know, it was three or four months ago, I took my cousins there. Uh, we went grocery shopping, and then we went to McDonald's, and, uh, they were like, you know, maybe, I didn't recognize these people, I think they were like from out of town. And they were, they were kinda noisy, and, and, you know, causing some problems, stuff like that. And, and I just said, well, I'm sure that the manager's gonna come over and say something. And the place was mobbed. I mean, they, they make good money there, and, uh, so I, you know, I think maybe they should be more attentive, or at least try to do something. And, uh, you know, it's like the barroom, every time something, but in the interim, they're making a lot of money. You know, there's all kinds of people drinking, everything going on, and so they call you, oh, I know, I called you, so that's okay. And I just think sometimes that, and I, I know it's also easy to, uh, to raise these things, but it's tough to, tough to resolve.
And, and I'd like to get a response back. You know, similar to what was done at Wendy's a few years ago. I mean, you know, you had the kids fighting, and all of that sort of thing, and you met with them, and there were cameras, and there were other things. You did have a couple of incidents at Wendy's, but nothing like in the past. You, these people have to have a greater awareness of this kind of activity, it's just too dangerous.
Chief, the other item is that, um, at, at the Portuguese club, I think we've talked in the past a little bit, but not too much. Um, it was nine twenty-eight intoxicated, intoxicated person. But the thing that got me, though, was, uh, two individuals intoxicated, causing a disturbance at the soccer field.
That was, that was in afternoon, actually.
Yeah, there was no disturbance, okay. But then, but there were hundreds of people watching or participating in soccer games.
Right.
Now, what I've been told by many people is that, in the summertime, whatever the case may be, there's a lot of people playing soccer, this and that, from out of town. Um, there are some fights, arguments, of course. The only thing I'm saying is that if you feel that, you know, if they're gonna, if they're gonna have a lot of people playing soccer, and some, a lot of these people from out of town, they're drinking and all that stuff. If we just have to make sure that, um, one, we have, you know, the safety of the officers, and that, you know, if we have to tell the Portuguese club, hey, instead of four guys, you're gonna have six guys. And if it's not the right thing to do, maybe, you know, we shouldn't allow that permit, or allow that to occur. Because a few people have told me that, uh, you know, on some of the nights, or some of the afternoon, there are a lot of people. And, uh, you know, people are drinking, stuff like that, and so, and, and the only reason I bring it up, and sometimes it's a sensitive area, hey, uh, Portuguese club is a great organization. A lot of our friends have been there for a long time. But I think when we read something like this, when it's, it's in writing, if we can try to curb things from happening, so, one, the people there don't get hurt, but, more importantly, the officers there. I mean, you've got two or three officers, and you've got three or four hundred people, and half of them are drunk, causing trouble. Uh, you know, I think something has to be done about that, next year, whenever the case may be.
I did meet with the officers of the club after the, particularly after those afternoon incidents, or the reports of incidents.
Yeah.
Uh, and I know that, uh, John Fernandez, as an attorney, has represented the club. He also met with the officers of the club, uh, to caution them about these types of incidents, that the liability has attached to it, as, let alone, um, the bad name you can inherit from those incidents.
Especially if something happens.
Exactly. So, did, I, I did meet with them back then, when that, particularly that afternoon, the soccer, uh, situation. Uh, I have discussed with them as far as rentals of the upstairs, uh, and how they monitor that and manage it. Uh, and, as I said, and, uh, John Fernandez will attest, he also, he could not make that meeting when I met with them.
Right.
He did meet with them separately, and had the same discussion.
Okay. But, but John's great, they're friend of mine, does a great job as an attorney and all that. But I, I think the main thing has to be you, with the relationship that you have with those guys, the officers, hey, this can't occur. I mean, they're talking about safety, people getting hurt, and if something happens, then it'll be worse.
Right, and expressing them the impact that those types of incidents not only will have on them as relates to that particular event, but future, you know? So, when you're coming for licenses and things of that kind,
Yeah.
um, it, it's gonna have an adverse impact, it's your reputation. You, it's gonna either be positive, or you're gonna build a negative reputation, so...
Now, those, the soccer games are concluded now, but they'll probably resume again when, in April, May?
There's, there's usually leagues that, and the leagues will rent the field from the club. And, and I think it really comes down to an issue of monitoring those games, uh, and how you go about doing that.
Yeah. So, maybe, Chief, in the springtime, you could meet with the officers again, and maybe give the report, the board a report on what's happening.
Sure, that's some of the discussion I have with them, is you're gonna have to charge more for the fields, and you're gonna have to hire details to be there. Uh, you know, I can't have, you know, four, five officers responding.
'Cause I'm sure those people are spending a lot of money, a lot of them are intoxicated. And, you know, I mean, not just for the safety for the, but the people going up there, but for the officers.
Absolutely.
'Cause you're in there with, you know, twenty, twenty-five people surrounded, I mean, it's a, not a good situation.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the problems they've had with the rental of the fields is that, uh, people going into cars, going into coolers, bringing out coolers, and not necessarily going into the club. Still their responsibility to monitor, and to manage. But at the same time, it's not as if they're seeing these clients and serving these clients, these clients that... And that's the discussion we had with them, Bill, is how do you manage? You can be managing the bar, it's, it's how do you manage the fields, the game out there? You know, very much as we do planes, parking, others, you know, cruiser swings through, making sure that things aren't out of hand. Well, i- if you have three, four hundred people at a soccer game, Better be out in the fields. In the way it's configured, you know, the field there, you, a cruiser swings through, and you're not gonna catch a whole lot. So, it's an issue of, they, they may be in the position where they have to hire police details that stay there, um, to manage the public safety of those events.
And Chief, probably, the, the language barrier is a, you know, could be an issue too. Maybe a lot of these individuals, uh, don't know what's going on and whatnot. But we, I would appreciate you let the board know in April, when you meet with them, come up with some guideline stipulations, because I just feel that, you know, if that is allowed to continue, I mean, something is gonna happen. And I really fear for the, the officers, that you guys have a tough job as it is already.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it could be detrimental to us, but it's adverse to them as well.
Oh, sure, no question.
You know, if, if there's anyone that has the best interest, I'll say, in this situation, it's the club itself.
Okay, I appreciate that. Anything else, any other, uh...
No.
Okay. Okay, I think that concludes the, uh, all the open meetings, all the, the agenda items for this meeting. We do have one item, executive session, and that's with the, regarding the police chief contract, motion for executive.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we will not be coming back at the open meeting. Thank you, good night.